Good evening, everybody, and welcome back to the Neighborhood Board. We have been on vacation. We are feeling well rested. The bags under our eyes have gone, and we are feeling fresh and ready to help out the community today. My name is Christian DeCavetto. I'm the Chair of the Kahala Wyallike Neighborhood Board. I'm not as well rested. To my left, we have our wonderful committee members. And let's go ahead and get started right off the bat. Coming in hot, let's see, do I have a representative from the Honolulu Fire Department? A representative from the Honolulu Fire Department? Going once, going twice. There it is. All right, skipping HPD, or sorry, HFD for now, going on next, Honolulu Police Department. Do we have a representative from HPD?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Lieutenant Mira from District Seven Honolulu Police Department. We're going to begin with the statistics. Motor vehicle thefts, we are four burglaries at nine, thefts at 11, and unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle at six. Total cost for service, five thousand four hundred fifty-three. And this month's tips is going to be regarding, through FEMA, the Family Emergency Communication Plan. Number one is to collect, create a paper copy of the contact information for your family and other important people, offices such as medical facilities, doctors, schools, and service providers. Two is share, make sure everyone carries a copy in his or her backpack, purse, or wallet. And three is to practice, have a regular household meetings to review and practice your plan. And also remember, text is best. If you're using a mobile phone, a text message may get through, but a phone call will not. And that's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you for that update. Does anybody on the board have any questions for the gentleman from the Honolulu Police Department?
Very simple. Can you hear me? Okay, simple question. Because I went to a board meeting last week, and the statistics they reiterated were a little bit different than the ones you have, different categories. And I'm wondering, do you have a database that all your incidents are stored, or is it individual districts that have information? How do you do that?
The different districts, I'm not sure how, it just was already set in place as far as what specific statistics are given. We're just giving the standard for this one. It's always the same statistics. That's the agreement that was made with the board. And that's just my understanding. Some districts could be different, yes.
So is there a central database that you have access to? Because they were asking for more information on just different things in the past. We have also. So I'm just curious what you have to do to get that type of information.
We have people that can actually pull the statistics. It depends. I mean, yes, the short answer is yes, there is a database for statistics. It just kind of depends. It kind of, you know, as far as what is being asked, that kind of stuff. But we have personnel that actually pulls it out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And you can also look at HonoluluPD.org as well as an option.
Thank you, Lieutenant Mira. Does anybody in the, oh, I apologize, Rich Turbin has a question for you?
Well, it's actually more a comment. Officer, I mean, you folks, the Honolulu Police Department, your staff are my heroes for this meeting, because you did a great job helping my community with a specific problem. We had a very disturbing homeless lady, paranoid, schizophrenic, yelling all the time, parked on, well, first she parked on my lawn, and then the HPD got, managed to get her to move, but then she parked on the right of way of my community to go to Kahala Beach. Very disturbing. She was extremely dirty, yelled all night. The people in my community, especially the women and the children now, were afraid to go to the beach, because they would have to pass her encampment to get to the beach. So basically, she was taking away the beach, Kahala Beach, from the community. HPD, especially Officer Chu, C-H-U, if you know him, were very determined to help us in a civilized, correct way to get rid of her. And they did. Explain the problems they've had with her over many months, because she travels around. They arrested her for burglary, because she burglarized a home. But of course, the judge just let her go, released her without bond. So she came back, and probably will come back. So, two words. First, I want to thank you, and thank the HPD and Officer Chu for doing a great job. But secondly, is there a way that you can, you know, talk, lobby with the courts, lobby with the people in charge, and ask them to please take these paranoid schizophrenics who are causing so much havoc in our community to a civilized-type rehab center, where they're not just suddenly released and turned back onto the street? I mean, eventually, they're going to hurt themselves if they don't hurt other people in the community first. We will help you in your efforts, Officer, if we can handle the problem in a way that these people just don't keep on getting released back to the streets, causing harm to our community.
Okay, we can definitely forward that information upwards.
All right. Thank you, Lieutenant Mira. Does anybody in the community have any questions or comments for the gentleman from the HPD? I think we're all set. Lieutenant, thank you again for your time this evening. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one.
Thank you, you too.
Up next, Board of Water Supply.
Hi. Good evening. Can you folks hear me okay?
We can indeed. Good evening, Lorna. How are you?
Good, I'm good. Hope everybody's okay as well. Very good. I have a quick announcement, as usual. No main breaks to report for last month. The only announcement I have for this month is about the 2025 Annual Unthirsty Plant Sale that's occurring on August 2nd. So we are inviting everybody to this annual plant sale at the Halava Ziruscape Garden, which is at 99-1268 Eva Ennis Street. It's in Halava, again, on Saturday, August 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This is a three-acre garden, and there's a lot of lush oases nestled in the Halava Valley Central Park industrial area, and will have live displays of drought-tolerant and native plant varieties. Admission is free, and we encourage you folks to park on Eva Ennis Street and catch the free shadow that we have taking you to the garden. This plant sale is a family-friendly event, and it will offer the following things. It's going to have a variety of zirp plants by local vendors. Payment, as I've been told, is only by credit card only, no cash. And there's also be a team of plant doctors from UH Master Garden Program with plant care advice and information. There'll be information booths, including rain barrel catchment information and free soil conditioner. And if you want more information, please visit the website at wwwboardofwatersupply.com/plantsale. That's my announcement for this month. Does anybody have any questions?
What a fabulous announcement it is. Lorna, my question for you, what is your favorite native plant?
Oh, no. You know, I wish I had a green thumb. I just try to conserve the water. That's where I come, so, but.
I love it. The passion is there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Lorna from the Board of Water Supply? Anybody in the community have any questions for Lorna from the Board of Water Supply? Lorna, thank you so much for your time this evening. It is greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Up next, I know he's here. He is my favorite, Casey Abe. Where are you, Casey Abe? Department of Transportation. All right, we'll skip on from Casey. Up next, filling of the vacancies. Yeah, we'll come back to it. Filling of the vacancies. We have one vacancy. Is there anybody in the community who's here this evening who is interested in helping to serve? The dental benefits are incredible. The pay is exceptional. It is competitive. We encourage you in all ways to help join and uplift our community as one voice. Going once, going twice. Sold to the highest bidder. Up next, election of officers.
Christian, interrupt you for just for a second.
Please go ahead.
I went to a meeting last week, District Five, and I had a few vacancies. And one thing I learned is that the board can request to have a specific sub-district vacancy to an open one. So it's for the whole district rather than sub-district. At large, exactly. So something we can think about if we can find somebody that's interested in the out large.
As long as we get somebody on here who wants to show up and help out, absolutely.
Thank you for that idea. I appreciate you looking into that. So anybody from any district can join us if they so wish. Up next, election of officers. How do we roll this?
Going back to nomination. So if a board member or another board member wants to, like, we have enough, we have quorum. Oh, yeah. Is Burnwell? Oh, is he? But we can decide for, oh, you want Christian?
Should go first?
I mean, Casey Abe. Casey Abe is online.
It's now a good time? Casey?
Sorry, I have computer difficulty, but I'm ready now.
No worries. We're just happy to have you here this evening. You are always my favorite presentation. Tell us all the community good you've done.
You can see my screen. Good evening, Chair Christian, and members of the Wyallike Neighborhood Board. Casey Abe from the State DOT Highways. Apologies, my camera is not working. At the May's meeting, I mentioned that the graffiti eyes were still out there, and the homeowners are still breaking our locks and trying to set up cap in our right-of-way. Working with our maintenance crew, they painted over the graffiti and installed a new lock. At a previous meeting, I mentioned a missing light standing near the Cocoa Head Overpass. I'm happy to report our maintenance crew has replaced the missing light standard. During my June field inspection, I noticed a light standard was damaged, a damage sign, some overgrowth, and a utility box cover that needed to be replaced. Working with our maintenance crew, they managed to address these concerns during my follow-up field inspection yesterday. Also during my June's field inspection, there were some potholes and a missing cover on the pedestrian push-button post near the 21st Avenue that our maintenance crew managed to patch and repair when they did my follow-up inspection yesterday. During my field inspection yesterday, I noticed some new graffiti and potholes that I'll have our maintenance crew address as soon as possible. I also noticed that a recently patched uneven sidewalk near Hunakai Street is not performing as expected. Looks like the concrete patch is too thin, so I'm having our maintenance crew grind the uneven concrete sidewalk to eliminate the tripping hazard. Also during my field inspection yesterday, I noticed some overgrown vegetation, so I'll work with our maintenance crew on cutting back the overgrowth. The start date of our seismic retrofit project has been pushed back to late August, early September due to contractors still working on getting some midos approved. At the May's meeting, a question was asked if the Wyallike Vida retrofit project would include netting to prevent bird droppings onto roads, cars, and sidewalks. Unfortunately, it's not part of the project. If the residents want something done to address the bird droppings, they should talk to their Neighborhood Board members for discussion. If the board members vote to have something done, they should then reach out to their elected state officials who can email me or Deputy Director for Highways, Mr. Robin Shishido. If they email our deputy, please have them copy me in their email, so I can follow up and report back at the next Neighborhood Board meeting. And finally, I want to thank Chair Christian for his letter requesting immediate action to improve the pedestrian safety at the three high-risk intersections along Wyallike Avenue under the H1 viaduct. I am working with our traffic branch, who is responsible for investigating, making recommendations, and implementing the changes. But they are short on resources, and I'm still waiting for their response. This concludes my report. If the Neighborhood Board members or the public has any concerns about the state highways, you don't have to wait until the next monthly Neighborhood Board meeting to express your concerns. You can email me your concerns, and if possible, send pictures or a Google Maps screenshot of the location of your concerns. I can start investigating your concerns with my peers and present your concern at the next Neighborhood Board meeting. I will not take any action until I get approval from the Neighborhood Board members. But if Neighborhood Board members or the public would like their concern to be expedited, since all of our offices are short on resources, they can email their elected state officials, Senator Stanley Chang, Representative Mark Hashem, or Tina Grandinetti, and your elected officials can email me or our Deputy Director for Highways, Mr. Robin Shishido. Again, if they email me, I'll forward the email to our deputy. If they email our deputy directly, please have them copy me on the email, so I can follow up and report back at the Neighborhood Board meeting. Our Deputy Director has a lot more clout than me when asking my peers to respond quickly to community concerns. As for your pedestrian safety letter, I would highly recommend the Neighborhood Board have the elected state officials email our Deputy Director and copy our director and me, since the Neighborhood Board already sent a letter to our director. Your elected officials can work with our Deputy Director, and if necessary, help provide the required funding for this pedestrian safety project in next year's legislative session, if we don't have the funds in this year's budget. I can take any questions at this time.
Thank you for following up on that letter, Casey. Means a lot, and I know it means a lot to the Sakai family, who have been waiting to see some community movement on this ever since Mojito Sakai's unfortunate accident at the Hunakai and Wyallike cross-intersection. So thank you. As for the bird poop, can we take a vote right now that we would all like to make sure that our cars don't have a bunch of bird poop on it? All in favor? Aye? Aye. A second. What about the birds? All right, so I will write a letter and get that sent off. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Casey Abe of the DOT? Rich?
Okay, I've been saving them up for a few months. Okay. Hey, Casey, since Alokeah Street is kind of the main downtown commuter feeder into, you know, the H1 freeway going east and west, do you have any clout to correct a problem on Alokeah Street? And that is, it's gotten so crowded and does not move during commuter time going home. Well, of course, the main problem, you've probably heard me rant and rave, one of the problems is taking one lane away for a bike lane that is never used by anyone except for, you know, illegal scooters. That's the far-left lane. The right lane is clogged up, because you have Amazon, you have Amazon delivery trucks illegally parked on the right-hand side. So essentially, you have just three lanes going up, and the, and the lights, but the lights are not synchronized. Lights are not synchronized, so maybe one or two cars move up every green light. The main problem is the King Street light, which goes on far too long to make King Street the priority highway during commuter time, and it's not very much used. And then there's another light for pedestrians midway up Alokeah between King Street and Baritania. And that light stays on for a very long time, and pedestrians are not using it. So the poor downtown workers, professionals, office workers, myself included, we go nowhere, very, very slowly, between approximately 4:30 to 5:30. Do you have any clout with the DTS to try to fix this situation up?
I'm glad we have the Deputy Director for DTS, John Nucci, with us. He's the person that normally our Deputy Director would talk to. Yeah, Deputy Director John Nucci is online right now. He's the main person you need to talk to, because Alokeah is a city road, and the city maintains our traffic signals for us, and also install the timing. We do work with them, but DTS is the main people on the traffic signal.
Yeah, I know, I know. Well, if they can just try to get out of one of the office parking garages between 4:30 and 5:30, like Pacific Guardian Center, Davies Pacific Center, which I know is converting away from office workers, but it really is an intolerable situation. I was talking to one of the professionals today who is retiring early and just, you know, leaving downtown, because he's just had enough with it and just can't take it anymore. It really is a problem if, you know, the city and the state wants to keep Honolulu as a viable place to do business. Something needs to be done about the problem on Alokeah Street. Why would anybody want to open up a business in downtown Honolulu when they're stuck in their building, stuck in their parking garage for an hour and can't leave? And it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I can talk to my Deputy Director, who can talk to DTS Deputy John Nucci. But that's about all we can do, because.
Well, any help you could give us would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions for Casey Abe? Does anybody in the community have any questions for Casey Abe? Casey, I got one here for you. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, I am Dalen Cam. Firstly, thank you very much for the follow-up on the bird poop netting. And also, thank you for patching the potholes under the viaduct. But there comes a point where that stretch of road becomes more pothole patches than actual roads. So my question is, is there any timeline or plan to completely resurface or repave that stretch of Wyallike Avenue under the viaduct?
I can talk to our payment program manager and get back to you next month as to when they have scheduled to resurface Wyallike Avenue. And again, if that's, when I get back to you folks next month, if not, except for that's where your elected officials can step in and talk to our higher-up appointees to see if they can expedite the resurfacing. Because the elected officials do help provide our budget annually every year. So I will get back to you as to when it's scheduled.
Okay, thank you. Also, one more concern. In Kaumuki, I think it's at the corner of Wyallike and Seventh Avenue, there's one of those little manhole covers or utility covers, but it's like probably sticking out an inch above the road. And I swear, every time I'm on the bus and it passes over it, my seat flies above an inch, like, out of the seat. And it's been like that for a very long time. I was just wondering if you guys can do anything about that?
Okay, I'll double-check to make sure that Wyallike Avenue and Seventh Avenue is.
Oh, yeah, that's going eastbound.
Yeah, I have to double-check on that, yeah. If not, I would have to refer, if it belongs to the city, I would have to refer to the city, reach out, have our Deputy Director reach out to Deputy Director John Nucci to see if they can address it for you folks. But I'll research it to see if it's a state or county road we're talking about.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for those answers, Casey, and thank you for following up. Let's see, anybody else in the community have any questions for Casey Abe? Casey, as always, it is an absolute pleasure. Thank you for your time.
Oh, you're welcome.
Up next, before we get to the election, there is a gentleman here from the Honolulu Marathon, who we just want to get in and out real quick. Sir, if you could come up to the microphone, make your introduction, and then just give us the lowdown, three minutes, please.
Wasn't prepared. I was just dropping by tonight to find out about the process of making a presentation, but we'll go ahead and do what we're doing here. So I represent the Planning Committee for the Honolulu Marathon Turkey Trot. We're planning for the, I think it's the 50th, there was a year in the pandemic, obviously, when they have one, or they did something else. Basically, the 50th, the 51st, going to take place on November the 27th, down in Kapilani Park. It's going to run all the way out. There's a, there's a couple of different events this year. There is a one-miler right around the park for people with strollers and families and, you know, anybody who wants to come out with their kids. It was a huge hit last year, and so we want to continue that going. Also gets people from, you know, who are on travel who want to do something on Thanksgiving Day. There's a one loop around, there's one time around Kapilani Park, a one-miler, two loops around Kapilani Park, and then a five-miler, which will run only out to the Triangle Park around and back. And so we have already talked to the police. We know the number of police that they need. We know the, where they're going to be located. We are, we have several committees working on publicity, and then also working with the safety systems to get the roadways sign and everything set up for traffic flow, make sure people get in and out of the neighborhood. Obviously, we'll have to clean up the trash and everything else. Is there anything, you know, if you need a more formal presentation, I do have a picture of the course map, but it literally is just aerial from around Kapilani Park to Diamond Head. Like I say, oh, our target, based on the year past, I think that we're looking maybe at 2,000 people would participate, but most of them will probably be in the park. A very few would probably do the five-mile, we think. But we're still trying to offer it to the running community for those who want to come out and do something. Anyway, it's been a tremendous amount of fun. It is about community health, and it's about getting out there and staying active. And so we're trying to promote that. And then it continues the work of the Honolulu Marathon Clinic, which has been going since about 1971. And that's it. So I was somewhat unprepared. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
No worries. If you'd like to submit that map for the next time that we meet, we can make that presentation on your behalf, just so you don't have to come down again.
Absolutely.
Is there anything that the Neighborhood Board can do to help support your organization or your community-based events?
Not at this time, but I was informed by Alan Sunio, who's our race director. He's done a lot of races around town that he used to come here and do a presentation. Sometimes it's just been submitting a letter and any documentation you need. Other times, it is to come and talk and answer questions and maybe bring anybody else. But however we can help you is why I'm here.
Absolutely. Some other organizations, they like to email in, just give us a heads-up. We make a presentation at the end, more of an announcement. If you have any accompanying documentation, you can send that in as well. It will be presented up on the screen as well to everybody online. But other than that, you know, we appreciate the time that it took to come down, and, you know, we're big fans of your organization and the work that you guys do. So, thank you very.
To get it on next month's agenda, just so you have, you know, there's some cushion between now and November, or where do I, do I just talk to Anson about where to send it or something?
You can just email it in to us.
You can email it to Anson Wu, anson.wu@honolulu.gov.
It's on the Neighborhood Board website.
It's on their website.
Got it. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right. Up to the moment I've all been waiting for, election of the officers.
Hey, does anyone want to nominate or self-nominate for the role of Chair?
I nominate, Christian.
I second it. I think you've done a great job, Christian. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any more? Or that's it? I want to call your name. Please say the last name, DeCavetto. And we have to do this. It's a procedure. Okay, Lee, I mean. Okay, Lee, I mean, Christian DeCavetto?
DeCavetto, aye.
Sorry.
DeCavetto, aye.
Rich Turbin?
Yeah, DeCavetto, aye.
McCoffey?
DeCavetto, aye.
And Kastengue?
DeCavetto, aye.
Christian DeCavetto stood the Chair.
My rule will be brutal and swift. But thank you, I appreciate all of you guys on the board, it's a pleasure and an honor to be here, so thank you. Up next, Vice Chair, is Brian Wong here? Is he back in? I see Peter Dudgeon online as well.
Brian's here.
Oh, hi, Brian. All right, perfect.
I'm trying to get my name up there, I'm, my video's off right now, sorry.
Oh, is it possible we could do the office for YouTube? Because we still have to do this. Is that possible?
It's okay for me if it's, it's okay on WebEx.
Oh yeah, it's okay, we could do it on WebEx. Want to do a five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess, we apologize for our bureaucracy.
Peter, are you there? Okay, okay.
All right. Recess is ended. Yep, and we got Peter done. Up next, for the nomination of Vice Chair, does anybody have any nominations for Vice Chair?
Well, I'll nominate Brian Wong.
I second that. Does anybody else want to run for Vice Chair? All set? All right. We just say his last name? All right, Wong, aye.
Wongai?
Wong, aye.
Wong, aye.
Wong, aye.
Brian Wong? He's still.
Wong, aye.
Okay, he is still the Vice Chair.
Thank you, thank you everybody.
Beautiful. Thank you for your commitment to the board. Up next, for the position of Secretary, do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate Lee, Lee Kastengue.
I'll second it.
All right, all right, yep, let's move on, postpone the vote. Up next, Treasurer. Does anybody have a nomination for Treasurer? Pardon?
Okay, I nominate Peter, Peter Dudgeon. Seconded.
Oh, Reg, I don't think I'm healthy enough to do that, but if you insist.
We insist.
All right.
Dudgeon, aye.
Aye, Dudgeon.
Dudgeon, aye.
Dudgeon, aye.
Dudgeon, aye.
Dudgeon, aye.
Dudgeon, aye.
Perfect. All right, we are all set, the elections are over, the polls have closed. Now on to the meat and potatoes, let's see. Determination of meeting date, time, location, and format, in-person and WebEx. I will once again throw the KCC Culinary School, once it opens its doors, into the ring. I would very much like to be seated, talking about our community in the center of our community. If any of you guys know anybody at KCC Culinary School, please apply as much pressure as needed, we do offer bribes. Does anybody else have any other additional location spots that they would recommend?
That's great. Can we send them a letter asking them, or our, you know, our, our KCC representative, Carol Oshiko?
I believe Carol actually recently stepped down from her position. But whoever her replacement may be, I mean, I say we open a line of communication with them and get rolling on this, because it would be lovely to be seated in the middle of that jewel. As for now, do we have an issue with Aloha Golf Course, Pakihale, those available pools? Aloha Golf Course, same time, 7:00 PM?
Yeah, no, no, not an offer, but I would suggest that maybe you send a letter question to Misaki Takabayashi, the Chancellor for KCC, an official letter, I think that might be appropriate.
That is an excellent suggestion, thank you very much.
I'll send you her contact information.
Please do.
Okay.
Board recess schedule, up to, do we have any objections to keeping the location the same?
No, but I love the idea of getting in at the culinary school, if we could do that.
Perfect. All right, Board recess schedule, so we got up to three meetings off per year, that seems excessive, but do we have any?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. I wanted to introduce myself. Aloha mai, my name is Lisa Yamamoto, representing Kapilani Community College.
Excellent.
And what, what was a question about the CIP?
Oh, we were expressing the desire to potentially host neighborhood board meetings at the new culinary school when it opens up, or really anywhere at KCC, but we would prefer the culinary school and all of its fine fanciness and splendor.
I will take that back to our Chancellor, Misaki Takabayashi, I would take that request back and get back to you on that. Right now, yeah, that's, that's as far as I can do for, for you.
No worries. Well, if that's all you can do, then thank you so much for doing it, we just appreciate and even opening up the line of communication. So if there's anything else we can do on our end to help that, please let us know.
Okay, thank you.
And congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
Okay, Board recess schedule, up to three dates off, do we just want to keep the same ones that we did this year? December and June, boom, 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 all in favor?
Aye.
All right, perfect. Keep it the same. Rules of speaking and time limits. Three minutes, we all good with that? All in favor? Aye, 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 aye. Perfect, all right. Reports of members' attendance at other meetings, did anybody attend any meetings?
I attended the Neighborhood Board meeting for District Five, which runs from St. Louis all the way down Diamondhead, so they have a lot of common issues that we have. One of the things I noticed at their minutes, I included the stats from the police and the fire, rather than just jumping people to a website, which I thought was kind of nice, because it kind of emphasized if people are reading it, they can see it right there. It was interesting, you know, they requested some stats for the Diamondhead Road, for incidents on Diamondhead Road, and they got the same type of feedback from the, you know, police that we normally do, is they ask, you know, specifics like what address, what type of incident, that type of thing. And one of the reasons I was asking HPD earlier about the database, because I believe they don't really have a database, I think they just have a file, and so it requires some programmers or special people to go ahead and get that data out. So there's no nice query system. And that might be something we want to think about and emphasize that they need to go ahead and get into the 21st century. I already mentioned, they already made a request to the Commission to go ahead and change one of their positions, their vacant positions, to a district open, at-large position, rather than leave it vacant. And the only other thing, someone said they saw a design plan, specified that the Aloha Bridge proposal was like 23 feet wide, and they're sorry, that's kind of wide for pedestrian thing, and they were worried about being used for cars later on, and just the way to get in. So they requested a presentation, are going to request a presentation for an update on that. That's about all I had.
Well, thank you very much, Lee, thank you for reporting that you attended, and also thank you for bringing up ways that we can improve. I do want to throw this out to the community, if there are ways that we can improve, make this more engaging, make you guys want to show up, please tell us, pretty, 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 please, tell us, we are here to help and hopefully to engage. So however we can do that, please let us know. Let's see, up next, do I have a representative from the Office of Governor Josh Green, a representative from the Office of Governor Josh Green? Ms. Patty Jettie, are you here with us this evening?
I am, aloha mai kako, and congratulations to all of the newly-elected Board Officers. I will post the Governor's Newsletter in the chat, and I'm really here to take any questions that you have back to the Governor and the other departments.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for the Governor's Office? Does anybody in the community have any questions for the Governor's Office? Ms. Jettie, I think we are all good here, thank you so much for your time, and please give our regards to the Governor.
Thank you, and by the way, Oheia is my favorite native plant.
Hey, red, yellow, or orange?
I think red, yeah, I like the, I like the pele.
Oh, a classic. Well, thank you very much for that input, appreciate it.
All right, thank you all.
Up next, we have the representative from Rick Belangiardi's office, Mayor Rick Belangiardi. Do we have a representative in the room with us? Mr. Nucci?
Aloha Chair DeCavetto, and the rest of the esteemed Neighborhood Board, John Nucci, Deputy Director, Department of Transportation Services. First off, before I start, I want to acknowledge that I, I hear Board Member Turbin's request for further analysis on Alakia Street, and I know we've talked to you in the past and we've worked with you, but I am going to ask our Traffic, Transportation Technology Division to take a look at the sequencing of lights on Alakia Street. That is something that we can adjust and make better with some observation first. So just want to acknowledge that I heard what she said at the time, but I didn't want to break protocol and address you at the time without first deferring to Chair for that. And I realized that in doing that, I just did what I didn't want to gaffe, so apologies to Chair right there.
If I can just add something, I appreciate your concern. I think in the past, you know, periodically, you have heard, well, the city, DTS has heard other complaints, and I believe for a while, it was sequenced pretty well, and traffic was moving quickly up Alakia Street, but it seems that in the past several months, the sequencing has gotten bad again. I don't know the engineering ins and outs, whether it has to be constantly tweaked or constantly maintained in a certain fashion, but recently, it's gotten, it seems to have gotten really bad with those two lights I've mentioned.
And I understand that, and I acknowledge that. Personally, what I've seen a proliferation of is the same that you have seen with the delivery vehicles, basically disregarding the, the no parking on the other side of King Street, in the right lane of King Street, which is the long curb we have now fronting the Central Pacific Bank Building. And we have, at sometimes, I've seen eight cars lined up and parked there waiting to pick up people, so that really takes away some of the capacity on the far side of King Street, especially when we have a good density of city buses trying to service that stop right there too. So we're gonna try to maybe address that with some coordination with HPD, some enforcement, but definitely we'll take a look at the signal sequencing for you. Chair, is it okay if I address the other issue with community member Cam that brought up on Wailei and Seventh Avenue?
Please go right ahead.
Okay, that is a city road, so we're gonna go ahead and let, depending on who that cover belongs to, we'll address it to the proper City Department for investigation and remedy.
I'm getting a thumbs up from Mr. Cam, so thank you very much, Sean, appreciate that.
Okay, I'm dropping a link, as all the cool kids seem to do, from the Mayor's Newsletter this month, but wanted to highlight a few things in that. City began an 80-acre master planning effort for the Iwile Kapalama Subcorridor. Mayor Belangiardi has signed a trio of bills into law designed to help increase public safety everywhere on the island, but with an eye towards the leeward coast and a lot of the, the issues that have popped up there, and hopefully, you know, this does our best to keep the rest, I mean, the whole island safe as a whole. Mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts, MOKA, unveiled three new art installations as part of our Wahipana Story Places Public Art Project. I kind of want to shout out, we did decorate a full-size city bus, and that's featuring the art of Kori Kamehana'ukala Tom, depicting the work and the travels of Hiiaka and Kamupua on the island of Oahu, and we have more to come with that. Entrepreneurs along the Wailei Coast began the Idea2Biz Incubator Program, sponsored by the Office of Economic Revitalization. And good news for the summer, when a lot of our, our older keke are attempting to get their driver's license, the city has brought driver's license learners permit online with no appointment needed. So that's innovation from our Customer Services Department that is now active online. I'm gonna proceed with some of the issues brought up in past meetings. One very top of mind, I know, for this board, from our department in planning and permitting, a resident inquired at a previous meeting about the 949 Keala'olu Place property and the presence of a 30-foot golf net fence, because the, the community member and the resident noted that the netting is still up. So DPP did an investigation and has declared that there is no permit for a 30-foot fence at 949 Keala'olu Place. Site investigation conducted on May 19th, 2025, for that property, revealed that there was a previous complaint in 2024, which was received for that fence built at the street fronting the property, which revealed a new metal fence with fabric netting that was constructed at the left rear at the property. So a notice of violation was issued. The owner's variance, the owner applied for a variance also in 2024, in June, to the Zoning Board of Appeals for that fence, and that application for variance was denied on December 3rd, 2024. The owner is appealing the decision by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the status is ongoing.
Is the 30-foot fencing still in place?
I don't know if the fencing is still in place. I can bring that question back, or if anybody has any personal knowledge, I know we had a lot of people who were very much engaged with this location on Keala'olu Avenue.
The gentleman in question, oh, sorry, go ahead, Peter?
It was two weeks ago, it was up.
All right, so as recently as two weeks ago, their application was denied in 2024. When somebody appeals something, does that give them the right to do the thing that they just wanted to do and got denied?
I don't know, but I can pose that question also to DPP, what happens to the things that are not in compliance but are in process with appeals?
Yeah, it sounds like this individual is quite wealthy and just feels like he can do whatever he wants in our communities without having to abide to the rules that most normal people have to undergo and adhere to. Perhaps there is a way that the DPP could show its teeth a little bit more, and perhaps convince the gentleman that this is in his best interest to bring down the fence, since it's been over a year now and we are still dealing with this. So if you could talk to somebody at the DPP, perhaps the director over there, and convince them of our plight, that would be most appreciated.
I can follow up, Chair, and I, I think most important to recognize is that, you know, unfortunately with, well, fortunate. I can follow up, Chair, and I I think most important to recognize is that, you know, unfortunately with, well, fortunately and unfortunately with government, there is a process for everything. So I'm not well-versed on what the process is once a notice of violation is issued by DPP and how, you know, the different steps work on that. But I can uh provide that question back to DPP's leadership for follow-up.
Absolutely, and we just appreciate you convening that message back and forth. So thank you, John.
Yes, um, moving on, it's actually.
Sorry, one second, we have a a comment over here. Please go ahead and introduce yourself for the audience.
My name is Sherry Spangler and I'm from Neighborhood Board number two and John used to be our uh representative for the mayor. But I'm just requesting not to discuss the issue here, but I've been trying to get through to you, John, about an issue that's happening over in the neighborhood, just across the border from Kahala Neighborhood Board, over in the Kalani Iki Kuleo O Board. And I was begging you to please get in touch with us. We can discuss the issue. It has to do with city permits for city streets. Um, and I've sent you detailed emails and I really uh need to talk to you because the community is very concerned about things that are going to be happening in the future. So I'm requesting that you um ask your assistant, I sent her the emails directly, I sent you the emails directly. And maybe she can bring you up to speed and we can talk about it at another time. Is that okay?
Um, Chair, is it okay if I address Ms. Spangler?
Please go right ahead.
Yeah.
Hi, uh Sherry, um I did actually know Tricia, uh my assistant Tricia, did let me know that you called. I was CC'd on the other email, so I didn't know that you expected a response from me. It was and your 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 um address line was actually addressed to somebody else. So I apologize if I misunderstood that. But I do understand that right after you called me, you did contact our um street usage department and you spoke to uh Ty Fukumitsu.
No, no, I didn't, not talk to Ty, left a message.
Was it a Daniel Whitman?
Didn't talk to Daniel, didn't talk to Bo, didn't talk to Kala, not, didn't talk to anybody.
Did anybody at all reply back to you? Because I I was under the impression that you had spoken to Ty and he's um.
No.
Yeah, so I I I believe somebody had responded to you with exactly what I would have discussed with you. So I will follow up with you. Um, I am not gonna be in the office tomorrow, but I can re- reach back to you early next week.
Okay, um we we left direct emails to all those people, uh to to Ty and to Daniel, I believe, and to the assistants. But uh no one's gotten back to us. It's very easy questions and very easy answers, but I guess no one wants to say them. And I'd really love to talk to you about it and not take up. And I only dared to ask it here because we were talking about issues outside this board district also. So I thought I'd take this opportunity to talk to you directly.
Okay, and rest assured, I'll call you back. But I I'm sorry, we had a, I misunderstood who the the email was addressed to. I wasn't on the two line. And then I thought it was just for my information. And then when, you know, uh after you called, I I I thought one of my managers had communicated that they had spoken to you. So that was, we had a miscommunication there. So I'll call you next week.
Okay, I appreciate it. I think this board might even want to know what's going on also. But uh it's an issue that's not being discussed at a wider level. It's a construction problem that's coming along up on the state highway and no one's coming to the boards to talk about it. The state hasn't come to the board, the city hasn't come to the board, they haven't come to this board, which will be affected by it. So it's becoming a larger issue and it's not only just my direct community uh that I represent in my sub-district, but also down the highway, two other communities are going to be affected. And actually, the whole corridor is going to be affected and so will Kahala. So we'd love to talk to you and and thank you for your response.
Thank you both very much. Um, oh, sorry, John, are we continuing the update?
Yes, um, one is actually with, the next one is with my department. Um residents from Kahala Towers have requested the removal of two street parking stalls on the Malka side of the entrance of Kahala Towers Parking Garage on Keilua Avenue. Um, we also received a letter from Kahala Towers Association of Apartment Owners um for the same um request. And um, let's see. We will be conducting an investigation to determine the appropriate no parking distance. And upon completion, if there, you know, if if everything works out, we can issue a paint and sign work order to be submitted to the Department of Facility Maintenance to install the appropriate parking restriction signage. Um, let's see, and I believe that wraps up the issues that I have for this board for this evening and open to questions or any comments.
Regarding the Kahala Towers um parking issue, once that investigative, well, first off, how long does that investigation take?
Um, we, let's see, it really depends on the workload. Um, we tend to not do a lot of these studies in the summertime just to make sure that the traffic and you know, the the other travel patterns are commensurate with most of the normal, you know, ebbs and flows of of the neighborhood. But given that the traffic in and out of this Kahala Tower might not be significantly different during the summertime, we might commence with that. Um, once we issue the paint and sign work order, it does go into the queue of our Department of Facility Maintenance. And um it they, it depends on where their crews are, but it can, it can result in maybe taking about anywhere from, you know, it could be the next day to maybe about eight months or so, six to eight months.
Well, we certainly hope it gets resolved before that. Um, just to refresh, uh it is a health and safety concern because the residents are pulling out of the apartment building and they are unable, it is a one-way road, two lanes. They are unable to have a full line of sight to the left-hand side. Um, and are requesting that these no parking spots be put in place, uh not for aesthetic reasons, but for health and safety reasons. So um hopefully that can help raise it up in the queue.
Yeah, we understand that. Um, of course, it's not for aesthetic reasons or for any reasons of convenience. Um, but I will have to communicate that to the Department of Facility Maintenance. I don't control their workflow or their um their process. But I do know that they only have one signage and striping crew for the entire island. So um th- they definitely have constraints around their capacity right now. So but I will do my best to help them prioritize that.
Appreciate that. And if we can do anything to help with that, please let us know as well. You can even tell the crews, I'll buy them lunch. We'll uh we'll bribe them in all the good old-fashioned ways.
Yeah, I don't think we're allowed to do that.
Um, alright, does anybody have any questions for the mayor's representative? On board?
Yeah, if you can pass on to the Mayor of Langiardi for helping that Kahala Beach uh situation. Uh, he really uh was a big help in getting that accomplished.
Absolutely. I I do have um, I have a meeting with Mayor tomorrow morning, um first thing in the morning before I take the rest of the day off and I'll bring that up.
Yeah, yeah, pass on to him our thanks and my appreciation.
Absolutely, I will.
Perfect. And then I believe Brian Wong has a question?
Yes, uh, thanks, Christian. Uh, hey, John, Brian Wong. Um, I'm not sure if, I can't recall if it was brought up to the mayor's representative or to Council Chair Tommy Waters' representative. But uh here and there, um there, the Y line New East Stream uh on the Malia Street side, there by the the bridge that goes over, there is a fence-off area with a gate or supposed to be an installed gate. And that gate has been um absent or missing for months. Uh, i- it was brought up previously. In fact, it was brought up through the three-one-one app as well. And it is still um not reinstalled. And I find that a safety hazard for people as well as uh it's an egress-egress for a home uh houses, uh people uh going down into that area as well. So hoping that that can be addressed uh soon.
Okay, I do am making note of that. Um, the Y line New East Stream uh access from Malia Street, got that.
Right, it's a right adjacent to the Hecol um Transformer um station, I guess we call it, uh right there.
Alright, does anybody in the community have any? Okay, um up next is a representative from Council Member Tommy Waters' office here. Oh, and John, thank you so much for your time this evening. It's always great to have you.
You're welcome. Always pleased to serve.
Up next, Representative from Tommy Waters' office.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can indeed. Please go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you, Chair and members. I'm Tasha Luke, uh constituent services specialist for Council District Four. I have just one update tonight. Um Chair Waters and Representative Tina Grandinetti are co-sponsoring a Kaimuki Town Hall next week, Wednesday, July twenty-third at Lehu Lehu Elementary School Cafeteria. Uh, we'll have representatives from PD, DTS and DCS on hand to provide updates and answer questions and hear any community concerns. And everyone's welcome to attend and participate in the discussion. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions or concerns back to Chair.
My bless. Thank you, Tasha. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Tasha? Does anybody in the community have any questions for Tasha, representing Council Member Tommy Waters? Here's this quick and easy tonight. Tasha, thank you so much for your time. It is greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Go one. Up next, Representative Mark Hashem. Crickets skipping. Up next, Representative Tina Grandinetti. Up next, Senator Stanley Chang. Do we have a representative from Senator Stanley Chang's office? You're with us. All these elected representatives working so hard. It's, it is summertime. Um, up next, we have residents' community concerns. If anybody has anything that is bothering them in the community, any things that they would like to bring up, address announcements. Um, we have three minutes. Please go ahead and introduce yourself.
Sherry Spangler, once again, but as a community resident, I was reading your minutes and I was very interested to um. Part of them, this is part of my concern. I was interested in the question a resident wanted to know under community concerns, whether the Kahala Community Association is still active. And the answer was, comments and concerns followed. Um, that's something that was discussed at length at the Saint Louis Diamond Head Neighborhood Board. They won't approve minutes for months because of those kinds of minutes. We used to get some kind of answer, even if you don't have to be uh excessive, but there's no answer there. And for I follow, I read all the minutes from Kai, from Hawaii Kai, my board, your board, Kaimaki. And I want to know what's going on in the community. And if you want to have community um interest and concern and coming to meetings, you might want to put in the minutes what they talked about. Uh, sometimes we can't always catch it on TV, so I read the minutes. I get them. So uh what can we, what was the answer to that?
So the answer, as I currently understand it, and I apologize if there's any uh false information in here, but as I.
It's not false, it's just no information.
Um, the, as I currently understand it, the Kahala Community Organization is defunct. It was closed down uh through a lawsuit which emptied its treasury banks. They were no longer able to self-finance and since, was it the seventies or the eighties?
It's a long, I mean, it was actually a long time ago and it was uh very sad. And actually, um, the um, what am I, what's her name who's, I believe, in prison? Uh, the ex-police chief's uh uh wife uh.
Catherine Keala.
President of the Kahala Community Association. And she had a part in the emptying, uh emptying out of the treasury. And uh the coup de grace, so to speak, was when the Kahala Community Association very stupidly uh proceeded with a ridiculous lawsuit. I have to say, I did my best to dissuade them from going forth with it. And what happened, I mean, I predicted, I'm not a genius, but I've had a lot of experience. They lost a lawsuit, uh the judge um uh sanctioned or or sanctioned or the tax the uh community association to pay off the legal fees of the defendant who not surprisingly won the lawsuit. And uh treasury was emptied and because of that stupid, you know, lack of fiduciary duty on part of the leaders, uh the Kahala Community Association sadly died.
That's very interesting. That never hit the paper and it never hit your minutes.
Yeah, sure, this was about twenty years ago.
Yeah, but I'm talking about your, someone asked and it wasn't even in your minutes. So it said questions and, you know, I just wish there'd be more information because it's.
Absolutely.
What happens in the community all over the island is very interesting and that would have been interesting to read and hear in the Kahala Neighborhood Board minutes because someone did ask. Thank you very.
Well, and you also bring up a very interesting point too. Uh, by not writing down the minutes properly, we are engaging in a form of ableism. So only those who can actually hear and be present on the internet or in person uh can only be, have access to the minutes as you state. So we will make a more concerted effort to try and make sure we include this information moving forward.
Well, I think it's something we may have to take up with the Neighborhood Commission because I think they are um, I don't know, I don't know if they're encouraging it or they're allowing it or it's, it's kind of happening in some boards' minutes. Ours are a little bit better, but I I know that it's not the fault of the person taking the minutes. It's, it's how, it's the new, maybe it's the new standard. I don't know, but I think we need to be looking at that. And that's why I was interested that you went to the Diamond Head Saint Louis Neighborhood Board because they refuse to to uh pass the minutes. They have almost a year. Because it said, these are not minutes.
I have a meeting with the NCO on August third, I believe, so I would be more than happy to bring this up as well. Um, I mean, if they're not doing their jobs accurately, it's up to us to make sure that they are. So thank you so much for.
Thank you.
For bringing this.
Kristen, just to comment on that because I have the meeting. Um, apparently, you know, the minutes are a problem. They even talked about how they can use ChatGPT to maybe to improve the minutes to include much more. And I agree, our minutes are not very good. They're not very helpful. Um, you have to go look at the website or watch the whole TV version of it and not, people aren't gonna do that.
You bring up an excellent point as well. When I met with um the NCO and all of the chairs, I think about nine months ago. Um, for one of my companies, we use an auto dictation program where you speak, it records everything. It's even done an excellent job of picking up Hawaiian. So um there is no reason why this technology should not be implemented. We pay twenty dollars a month and it's way more than enough and it gets full capture. So we know for a fact that they have access to these technologies. They know about these technologies. I even offered to create an AI for them to do all of this for them. Um, but we haven't received any follow-up since, so um I'll make sure to follow up on this. And thank you, Lee, for helping to confirm too that this is happening at more than one board as well. Just um interesting, interesting issue. Conspiracy is afoot. Uh, but uh, okay, thank you. Uh, up next, does anybody else in the community have any questions, comments, concerns? Oh, and sorry, going back to the uh Kahala Community Association, uh the bylaws and their most recent lawsuit was actually sent to me by a community member named Christine, whose son, I believe, is actually here this evening. Um, but so as the, the organization is dead, but we do have access to what they were doing and how they were doing it. So hoping to expand a little bit on that. It would be nice to see Kahala's standards be uh lifted up again and, you know, everybody be able to enjoy a a clean and tidy neighborhood. So um appreciate you following up on that as well. Um, let's see, uh I do apologize, there was a typo. I incorrectly put the proposal to establish a community planning committee under the board business. That will be put under new business. So we're not skipping it. We're just moving it under its proper place. Um, board business, the approval of Thursday, May fifteenth, regular meeting minutes. Can I get a? An I? Any, we don't have Sylvia, so we don't know if there are any problems with the postpone. We will postpone. Um, let's see, the wildfire uh preparedness workshop actually happened last month. Uh, this should not have been included in these minutes. I apologize for that. Um, the informational update, Summer Streets Pilot Program. The Hawaii House of Representatives has passed a resolution encouraging the city and county of Honolulu to implement a Summer Streets Pilot Program, promoting temporary street access for pedestrian cyclists and non-motorized users to support sustainability, local businesses and community help. Um, so let's hope people are getting out and about and enjoying the summer on the streets. And then up next, the proposal to establish a community planning committee. Uh, we will discuss and receive feedback on a proposal to establish a Y like a hollow neighborhood. We will discuss and receive feedback on a proposal to establish a Wailea Kahala Neighborhood Board Community Planning Committee intended to support long-term neighborhood visioning and development review efforts. This has been submitted by Aloha McGuffey for board consideration. Aloha, what did you like to say a little bit about, uh, about the effort?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, well, first of all, I think that most of you know, our community, the Wailea Kahala community is divided into two city and county, um, Oahu Regional Plans. One is the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan, which is from the Wailea Nui Bridge over by the Wailea Country Club. Two, and including the residents and Wailea Country Club, Kahala Beach Apartments and Kahala Hotel. Then on the other side of the stream is our primary urban center uh, development plan, and that goes from the stream in Kahala all the way over to Pro City. So it's a big plan. And when you look at those two plans today, um, there are very little information or planning really for Wailea Kahala community. And so this proposal asks that we organize a committee to, or form a committee to review those two plans. And then with community engagement, get input and start collecting information that we feel at the local level. Um, what should be included in the plan. And I must say, Sherry and, and all of you over at the Hawaii Kai um, uh, Neighborhood Board. Oh, and, and from, I should say Kalani Iki and Hawaii, number two and number one, uh, Hawaii Kai are doing a great job with the East Honolulu Plan. And there are a number of, uh, fantastic initiatives that are not only being implemented, but also being, um, funded by the, both the city and county and the state. And so there are a number of areas that we need improvement in the Wailea Kahala Neighborhood um, area that, uh, we feel should be added to the, uh, those two plans. So that's the purpose of the plan. And, um, and I also have in the Google Drive, uh, that Anson put up, not just a copy of the proposal. So if you read the agenda for this committee meeting tonight, you, there's a link to get to the Google Drive and included there is an FAQ sheet. It's a one pager that gives you, uh, frequently asked questions that, uh, will help to better understand the, um, proposal.
Thank you for that, Aloha. Um, before we take any comments, I do have a testimonial from Lucinda Piles that was submitted that I was asked to read out loud. Dear Board Members, this testimony is in support of the resolution to be considered under Board Business, which states "Proposal to establish a community planning committee intended to support long-term neighborhood visioning and development review efforts submitted by McGuffey for board consideration." "We believe that this would be very beneficial in that it would provide not only for more proactive involvement in the long-term vision for the preservation of and the development of the Wailea Kahala community, but also create awareness and engagement in the larger Ahupuaa-based Maoka-to-Makai framework that impacts our community, such as in the restoration and preservation of the Wanalua Bay ecosystem and the urban center and East Honolulu Development Plan reviews." "It is our tenure on the board, in our tenure on the board, we found we are more often in the position of being reactive and often late to the game, rather than being able to be proactive and able to influence planning. As prior members of the Wailea Kahala Neighborhood Board and as residents of Kahala for more than half a century, we encourage you to support the establishment of this committee. Sincerely, John and Lucinda Piles." We will now take comments.
John and Lucinda Piles are great activists for the community. I just wanted to mention Ian Lind just put out an article on his own website, which I would suggest you all read. It should be part of your study in this, uh, thing, the Planning Committee. Bishop Estate wants to redevelop the Kahala Beach Apartments because their leases are up in two years and they want to go sixty feet. And it's, uh, and what they want to do is very intrusive. If you read Ian Lind's article, explains in depth what would have to happen if Bishop Estate, uh, redevelops that parcel to sixty feet. They wouldn't have, because of the, uh, grandfathering of certain things and, and different permitting and zoning. They, to do it, they'd have to widen the road because it has to have access for big trucks and fire engines, which does not exist there now. It's a little two-lane road. I don't know where they're going to get that from. Uh, but anyway, it's something that your planning committee will need to look at. Plus, the, um, hotel, I think they may have renegotiated their lease, perhaps. But the leases are coming up at the Kahala, um, at the, uh, at the shopping center. They're going to be up. And as what I was saying and trying to warn everybody, they're going to be looking at highest and best use because they're not making enough money out of retail. Uh, we're just holding, you know, we're really very quite scared that Macy's is going to leave. We don't know, but we're worried about it. Um, anyway, they're looking at what, um, Alamoata Shopping Center did when they allowed all the, um, apartment buildings on the Makai side and the Ocean Side. And, you know, they were going to do it over in the Macy's parking lot because that pencils out bringing them more money. So we have to be, if your planning committee needs to be looking, what they're going to do at Kahala Mall. And I, on the other side of Kahala Mall, we care about that too. But that's why we didn't want the Kahala Neighborhood District to be included in the East Honolulu Communities Plan because that whole parcel, so I've been warning about that whole parcel of Kahala Mall and all the business district there. Their leases, um, some of them are B two, some are A two, but they can go sixty feet. They may try and go for more. Uh, it's, it's big and it's coming and it needs to be looked at in terms of Kahala. And we don't want any of that in East Honolulu. We've been fighting that for decades. Because I've been on the board for thirty-six years and that's, we've been fighting that since day one. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention because that Ian Lind's article talks about it. That's all. Thanks.
Ms. Spangler, uh, since we have you right here, um, just in terms of providing advice or guidance uh, to Aloha or anybody else interested in this, uh, issue. Do you see any potential ways, since obviously you understand so much of this issue, you've been on top of this, you've been involved in the community forever. Uh, do you see any way to safely or directly, um, allow Kahala into the development plan while also neutralizing any fears of large-scale development through Kamehameha Schools or Bishop Estates?
When you say development plan, do you mean East Honolulu?
Yes.
Because I was corrected like this, like crazy when I started out. It's not a development plan. You see, that's why you're still in, that's why Kahala is still in the PUC Development Plan. Because Bishop Estate wants to develop Kahala Mall and all that business district. And they've been waiting. Where you have the, is it Ko'ula, the, the Kahala Strip Mall with the food land? They wanted to build there very high. And that was fought and they didn't get it. So now they put in what they put in there. But every corner there, they're going to be looking at. So you have to look at it. East Honolulu is a sustainable communities plan. So we're not looking at any development. And that's the problem for us to have you in. And our board has already talked about that and at this point, not interested in that melding. Because you, Bishop Estate still wants to develop. And that's why you were left there. Because when I first got on the board, I said, why isn't Kahala in the East Honolulu part? Because, you know, I went to, I lived in the Wailea Golf Course since fifty-nine, used to walk to Kahala School. And I said, why aren't we, why isn't that in the East Honolulu part? And they said, oh, pat me on the head. It's because we are East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan. Kahala is in the PUC because they want to develop. And Richard Turbin wants to talk. That's the problem.
Sorry, I believe Aloha wanted to say something real quick and then Rich will get to you.
Yes. Well, first of all, just a point of clarification, um, the Kahala Hotel, the Kahala Beach Apartments and the Wailea Country Club, as well as the residents alongside this Wailea Nui Stream are all part of the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan. That's the border. Yes, Kahala Beach Apartment is already in the, uh, Wailea, the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan. Because the border, the, the west border of that plan ends on the, on this, at the stream. So all of those people are there. So any development that's going to happen in that area will have to go through the East Honolulu Sustainable, Sustainable Plans. Regulations.
Very true. But the problem for Kahala Neighborhood Board is that only access is in Kahala Neighborhood Board. So all your impacts will be, we'll just have to discuss it in the East Honolulu Plan. But all the impacts are felt in Kahala because the only access is on Kahala Avenue. So that's why you guys have to be on top of it. And I suggest you read Ian Lind's thing. It's just fascinating. He goes into the, the history and he's so good at that. And that's the only problem. It's, it's all on Kahala Avenue. So it's all in Kahala. And that poses the problem for you guys. And yes, we'll have to look at it in the East Honolulu part. But that's why I was saying that you need to look at it.
What was the name of that document?
I believe in Civil Beach.
Oh, I'm sorry. Civil Beach?
Yeah, Ian Lind article. I'm pretty sure I read it and if I remember correctly, it was in Civil Beach.
He has his own website though, and he, he's unbelievable.
I can just give a little history.
Please.
Um, Lucinda, um, I want to comment on Lucinda's letter. But a few years back, maybe it was five years or so, um, Lucinda and myself, and there was one other person, I forget, were on a Neighborhood Board Committee, uh, on this issue. Uh, and we wanted to see if we could get the Kahala area into the East Oahu, uh, Neighborhood Development Plan. And Aloha, you're right. We have a little bit of our Neighborhood Board, uh, that's in the East, the East Oahu Neighborhood Plan. And the rest, probably oh, seven eighths or so of us are in the, uh, Urban Core Plan. And Lucinda and myself went to meet with, uh, Tommy Waters. You know, Council Chair Tommy Waters to talk about it, to talk about all of Kahala going into East Oahu, which we thought made sense. And Tommy says it's going to be, Tommy Waters said it's going to be pretty impossible to accomplish. One reason being that the East Oahu, uh, Neighborhood Boards didn't want us, you know, didn't want Kahala uh, in probably for the reasons that Sherry has mentioned. But he did say that, uh, as far our, what he was going to try to do is put the, uh, lowest, um, density, as far as development is concerned, the lowest density developments, i.e., um, single-family houses uh, would be, uh, the, um, uh, would be the feature of the entire, uh, Kahala area. Okay? In other words, no high rises. Uh, we have been waiting, uh, for, um, uh, the city council to finish the job as far as that's concerned. But it's, you know, like so many of these bureaucratic, um, deals, it's been very, very slow going. And, uh, probably the next meeting, we, we should ask, uh, Chair Waters what's going on as far as that's concerned. Um, as far as what Aloha is proposing, I think it's a very good idea to have a committee that's looking for, you know, controlling our future destiny. Um, with regard to Kamehameha Schools' future plans, uh, the last developments they did, I don't know if you were here or anybody was here. And they were talking about the development of the new development, of the, uh, new strip mall, uh, behind, uh, McDonald's. Many of you are here, but, uh, the, uh, Kamehameha Schools came forth with their proposal and they first put up a diagram that showed a thirty-story condominium. And then she said, oh, that's just, that's, oh, that's, that's just a joke, you know, and then, yeah. Yeah. And then pulled up, you know, pulled up the, you know, the actual plan, you know, which was low-rise. And kind of same thing with the, um, Kona Market, you know, which I know we have problems with. Uh, Colin has talked about that, but it was the same thing. They kept it at the same level. So there is a group within Kamehameha Development that are opposed to, uh, you know, high-rise developments in Kahala. But whether they're going to be able to, you know, stand the pressure of building huge, um, you know, condominium, condominiums on or around the Kahala Mall. I think Sherry is right. It is a real danger. And, um, we got to fight that in all, all possible ways that we can. And I think that would be one of the goals of Aloha's committee.
I'm not sure if fighting Kamehameha Schools would be the goal, but the definite goal will be to look at the two plans and determine, you know, what, what we can do to ensure that um, our communities are thriving, uh, both environmentally as well as, um, our people are, are happy within this area. And as we've discussed before, um, what, uh, what comes down from, from the mountains and into the valleys and over the freeway also ends up in our Mount Lula Bay, which goes from Diamond Head to Cocoa Head. And if we don't do something in those plans to protect our bay by looking upwards, Maoka first, I think we're going to be in deep trouble. As they say, deep kimchi after a while. So that's the purpose of the plan, is to really take a look at what's out there. What do we need to do to, um, add to the plan? And, and not to take away from what DPP is doing, but really giving them, uh, information that is grassroots uh, driven so that they can update those plans when the time comes. And we should be prepared for that.
All excellent points all around. Please.
My name is Kate Cagle and I live in the same complex as Aloha does, the Kahala Beach Mall. The Kahala Beach condos. And I agree with Aloha completely that something has got to be done to save everything besides just getting eliminating high rises. The whole area needs to be saved. We can see it. I've only been there twelve years and I've seen the damage of the water coming in. I've seen the garbage that comes down the canal. The Christmas trees. I have a friend who, Buzz, our Buzz, used to be a renter, would collect a thousand golf balls. I mean, that's jamming up the canal itself. But why, where are they coming from? All of that garbage that we're seeing coming out of there, Christmas trees every Christmas. We'll see several trees rolling down. It's, it's so sad what's being done to it. No one's paying attention. And I had a woman one day, I was pulling, picking up palm fronds that had fallen on a bad weekend with the wind. And this woman said to me, why are you doing that? They have staff to do it. I said, this is my home. That's what I'm taking care of. Not you with a short-term rental. It's my home that you're walking over and not caring for. And with this, uh, uh, resolution with Aloha, I think it would do a tremendous amount. And to hear everybody else from every community, not just ours. We've got to listen to you ladies. We've got to listen to you, Mr. Kim, the younger generation, everyone, to be able to live here and stay here.
Thank you so much, Kate.
Just to let you know where all that garbage is coming from, the two canals, the one in backup, the old Blockbuster and Time Supermarket. There's a canal there and homeless people camp there by the dozens. And we keep telling them, uh, and they go there and they go through the Goodwill boxes. They throw all the trash that they don't want there and they live there. And they're also in Kapakahi Stream as you're going up Wailei Avenue on ramp to get onto the highway. Kapakahi Stream underneath the freeway going down, coming alongside Kahala Nui. Homeless camps there. And those are the guys that come up and sit under the viaduct and sit outside Aloha Gas and pedal and urinate and kill all the trees. Um, but that's where the trash is coming down at Kahala Beach. As they collect it, they dump it. And then any storm, it goes down there. Two streams empty down there. So they empty down in two separate places. And then it goes up and down the beach. And that's the problem. You know, that's also in your district.
Yeah. Actually, one of my businesses is located next to, uh, the opening for one of the viaducts, which the river the viaducts, which the river goes subterranean, comes through, and then pops back out by the, where the Blockbuster used to be. And several times, I have had both myself and my employees assaulted, threatened, and last month, we had a knife pulled on us. It was a pretty slow month. But I can confirm that indeed, there are large encampments, subterranean, which is dystopian as, as it can get. But it appears as though every time, we've asked several times, HPDs, several groups, not only just to come in and clean up, but also to provide support services and get these people, you know, the help that they deserve and need. But because it's, on one side, it's sitting county, on the other side, it's state, and is it, this and that, and the bureaucracy gets involved. And the second that happens, all progress holds. So for any government officials, representatives, or folks who just want to help, if we can figure out a way to kind of clean up that, that in-between and get a little bit more inter-agency cooperation, that would be very much appreciated.
I'm so sorry. I did not mean to talk tonight. Our board was told, if you're concerned about the homeless and you see a situation, we're supposed to call the homeless coordinator. And there's a guy, I don't know if he's at city or state level, and I don't have it here right now, but we're supposed to call that person, and they're gonna go and deal with it. Because I told him, actually, I told Casey Abe about the underneath Kapakahi Stream, which is the one that comes down by Kahala Nui. And they cleaned that up, but they go right back. But the fact is, they gotta keep on it. So that you're supposed to call this homeless representative. So call, ask your city, state, whatever, say, "Who is that person?" And we'll call him and have him deal with it.
The problem I had recently, I called the police, and I was told to call the police, and the police were very, very attentive. They came right away, and they removed the person. I've done it a few times. And a lot of my neighbors say, "I have a homeless person, you know, can't you take, you know, Mr. Turbin, you know, your job is to take care of that." And I say, "No, your job is to call the police. I can't be the only one calling the police." But I think you all have to call the police. And, you know, the police were honest with me. I mean, they bring it, they bring the person to court, and the judge just lets them go. I mean, there has to be pressure to, no, they have to be, you know, taken to, you know, they, we have homes now. We have homes in the state where, in the city, where the, the people who are, are, you know, drug, drug addicts and are, you know, psychologically deranged can be kept in a civil, in a, in a civil rehab center and, and, and not be permitted to just go back. You know, there really has to be community pressure. I mean, Josh Green has been talking about this, too. That is, you know, a state plan and a city plan, but there has to be pressure from us, the people, to have our public officials accomplish this and not just have a whack-a-mole situation where they get rid of the homeless, and then two days later, they come back. You know, this, there's gotta be better, better plan. And other cities have accomplished it.
Absolutely. I actually wrote my doctoral thesis on this. It is easily accomplishable. It would actually save the state hundreds of millions of dollars, and we would all, including the people who are currently suffering out on the streets, good, you know, American citizens who deserve the same dignity and respect that the rest of us do, would be well taken care of. It's easy to accomplish. So it just requires bringing all the right groups together, which is why we are all here this evening. But Casey Abe, I believe you had your hand raised?
Yes, we do have our homeless coordinator, and they do weekly checks around the area. And the problem is that when we see the homeless, we do offer them support and services that they can utilize, but the problem is they refuse. So all we can do right now is, our homeless coordinator, tell them, "I'm sorry, you have to move out of this area because it's part of our state highways, and you have property, so you can't stay here." They move, and then once our homeless coordinator leaves, they move right back. But we, but what we're trying to do is go, do sweeps every week, reminding them, and hopefully they move out of the area. It's similar to how I do my monthly inspections and adjust graffiti. We keep on constantly hanging over the graffiti and hoping the graffiti artists realize that their, all their hard work is for not, because we're gonna just pin right over every month. But, and as Mr. Burden, as Mr. Turbin says, "Yeah, we gotta get some kind of legal thing, you know, adjust ACLU that seems to support the homeless people and their rights." But for now, the government, all we can do right now is constantly do weekly sweeps.
I'm sure that gets very expensive.
Well, you know, the U.S. Supreme Court did come down with that decision several months ago, that it is the city's responsibility to maintain the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And you can, quote, lock the homeless up if they refuse to leave city and state property. So constitutionally, I know, for decades, "Oh, the ACLU is gonna sue, the ACLU is gonna sue." Trust me, the ACLU, ACLU has lost, and the Supreme Court of the United States has said, cities can enforce the removal, if necessary, coercive removal of the homeless.
John v. Boise, 2017, I think. But yeah, I apologize, I think we've gotten a little off-topic here, but the question at hand, lovely to know that we all agree that there is an actual problem here, common ground. But I believe the, oh, sorry, go ahead, Lee.
Just to comment real quickly, back on the Planning Committee. Based on what I've heard today and going to the other meeting, and by the way, thank you for joining our district meeting, because we appreciate that. My, me, if I came up with this, this says, this is only for our district. And I'm wondering how we're gonna communicate with the district beside us, because it affects us.
Yes. Well, one of the things in the proposal suggests that we collaborate with the six, well, actually, it started off with just the other three, the other two neighborhood boards, the, besides us. So that would include the, the Kuli'oo' Kalani Number Two and Hawaii Kai Number One Neighborhood Boards. But now, I'm thinking that we, I'm proposing that we actually extend it to five total neighborhood boards to include Kaumuki and also include, I'm sorry, four more, Kaumuki and Palolo, because the Palolo neighborhood also aligns with our Wailei Nui border and where Wailei Nui Stream is located. So I think we need to get collaborators from those neighborhood boards as well. That's a good idea, too. So I think once we get, if once the Planning Committee is approved and formed, then it's time to start reaching out to those neighborhood boards and start establishing the, you know, the makeup of how we're going to be meeting, where we're gonna meet virtually, will it all be virtual? I think because of convenience, it might be an entirely virtual neighbor, meeting. And then how many times do we think we want to meet per year? So those are details that we'll get into later, but that's a good point. Thank you, Lee.
Well, I think it's clear that no matter what, we do need to figure out more information on this, and also maybe even assess our risk, and just figure out, again, how we can help the community and how this issue can be better brought to light. So can I have a vote?
I'd like to just.
Go ahead.
I think we deviated a lot. There's a lot of discussion about what other things beyond what I think we're voting resolution on here. And I'm not, and I guess I'm not really understanding the, understand it fully. You're asking for us to, to vote to form a, a committee board within our Neighborhood Board for, you know, I guess, research to help guide the principles of our op-ua, right?
The purpose of the Planning Committee is to review two plans.
Right.
The East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan and the Primary Urban Center Plan.
Sure.
Because our Wailei Kahala Neighborhood, Neighborhood Board is governed by those two different plans. And so in order for us to make any changes or adopt any initiatives that might, that we may want to include in those two plans, we will need to discuss it, and we'll need to determine what they are. So by having a Planning Committee, we will actually get input from our members, but also get member, input from the other neighborhood boards to determine what they're doing. What successes do they have to share with us in terms of best practices, so that we can also consider those for our Neighborhood Board, for the Wailei Kahala Neighborhood Board? Because you cannot organize a committee only for Wailei Kahala without including best practices of other neighborhood boards who are also in those same two plans. Is that clear?
Um, I guess you're just having an advisory committee to advise the other two committees to, because, and to support of our Neighborhood Board. And I guess, why would that deviate from what our Neighborhood Board does, doing already, besides having that as a discussion? Why do we have to form a separate committee?
Oh, I see. So if you take a look at those two plans, we have nothing. The Wailei Kahala Neighborhood Board has not entered any initiatives into either of those plans.
Right.
Whereas, if you look at what Kalani, what Kuli'oo' Kalani Eki and Hawaii Kai, they have all kinds of initiatives going on, whether it's wildfire prevention or disaster planning, ecosystem restoration, forest restoration, they're doing all kinds of things that are in those, in the East Honolulu Sustainable Plan that's not in our side of the valley or our side of the bay.
Yeah, that's very unfortunate. I mean, I agree, that's we're not being included in that stuff.
Lucinda is really right in that, you know, we're, we're behind the eight ball most of the time, and we, because we are not in the plan. Our voice, our voices in our community are not in the plan.
Speaking of a community voice, I believe we have one right here who'd like to speak.
Thank you.
Hi, Kinen Kinimaka, resident. Yeah, I just had some questions regarding the members. I was just looking at the proposal, and it seemed a little bit open to me. It says, "Open to Wailei Kahala Neighborhood Board members and interested community participants, including residents, cultural leaders, students, nonprofit representatives, and professionals in urban planning and natural resources." So I was kind of just wondering, you know, like, how members would be chosen, how many there would be. And, you know, just looking at this, speaking of Kamehameha Schools, you know, really, every member could be from Kamehameha Schools, just looking at this. So I was curious if you could maybe kind of explain.
Sure. So, right now, we have members like Kapialani Community College, and they are part of the Primary Urban Center Development Plan. You also have 30 schools within the same area, from Diamond Head over to Cocoa Head, Hawaii Kai, Cocoa Head. We would need to get many of them involved, because we all share the same infrastructure, water, water supply, utilities, et cetera. We also, probably one of the key points, too, is we also share the Mauna Loa Bay. So if we want to keep the Mauna Loa Bay clean from Diamond Head to Cocoa Head, we need everybody's collaboration, because it's no use only one side of the bay doing something fantastic to keep us clean, and the other side is polluting. So if pollution is coming from, you know, the top of the streams or canals into our bay, then I think it behooves us to collaborate with all the stakeholders within East Oahu to make sure that we are working together in making a better plan for our future and for future generations. And you're right, it could include Kamehameha Schools, it could include, you know, other people in, in the area as well. But the more the merrier, because you want to get all stakeholders at the table. At this planning table, we want all the people who are going to be impacting our community to have a voice. And if Kamehameha Schools could be at the table, I think, better for us, then we won't have, you know, a, a dark spot, unknown spot out there, and we have no answers for. And I think they could give us a lot of good answers, since they are a major stakeholder in our Wailei Kahala Neighborhood.
Okay. So my understanding is that members are essentially participants at these meetings? Or, no, I, I was just curious how these members are chosen?
Oh, the first thing we'll do is send out invitations to people who are stakeholders that we know, that we know, and ask that they also share. I don't know, Anson, is there a way that people who participate in our meetings today can be invited?
It'll most likely be a vice, a chair and a vice chair be decided already, so.
No, no, I mean, so for example, all the people who are invited to participate in the board and those who come on, you know, come on our, our WebEx gathering and give input, how do we reach out to them? Do we have a database of people?
Oh, we just do a mail-out.
Okay. So we would do an email, is it like an email?
We, we do both e and, and.
Yeah. So everyone within our Wailei Kahala Neighborhood Board mailing list will be invited?
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, people who sign up for the meetings, yeah, sure. We, we want as many people and.
We also post it online, so, on our website.
Okay. And would like the membership kind of structure be similar to what we have here for our Neighborhood Board, say, nine? Oh, I was just curious, how many members would there would be? I'm just curious.
I'm curious, too.
So, you know, there could be as many as a hundred or?
I mean, I think with Zoom these days, you can have quite a few people. But I think, you know, once the ma, once the, the committee is organized, I think some of those questions will be answered when we see the interest of people coming in. I know a number of people that are already working with us, whether it's Kahala Hotel, or Kahala Beach Apartments, or Wailei Country Club, and others going towards Diamond Head, including Kapialani Community College. You know, we want everyone in. So, and then we may need to probably divide up into subcommittees, because we, one committee cannot manage all topics of both plans, right? So someone may need to deal with houseless, some may need to deal with transportation. I know that there's a lot of interest in doing more with bikes or pedestrian walkways. So, you know, I don't think one committee can manage all of it, but we may have to break it out into subcommittees, if that answers your question.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Shall we bring it to a vote, then?
I guess I, I still, sorry, I wasn't, I'm not gonna, go ahead. So I, and, sorry, Aloha, I've turned, turned delaying this. I, I strongly support, like, sustainability. I strongly support, like, cleaning of pollution. I think it's, I, I didn't appreciate you saying one, that, that the PUC is a polluter. I think that's not necessarily a, a thing of in their charter at all. And I don't think that's what they do. So I think saying, you know, the PUC carrying that is different than what I was, what, what the, you know, East Honolulu Neighborhood Board, or the East Community is doing, is what they're suing sustainably, while the, the PUC is not. I think that's a misnomer, and I don't, I don't do that. I also am very scared that, like, I want to say, so I'm, I'm Sub District One. I, unfortunately, I'm the only representative from Sub District One, but I hold the majority of population within our, our neighborhood, right? And I think that this, my neighborhood has, you know, multifamily homes, and that's how we have the more, the more, you know, population. And I'm afraid discussions, how it turned tonight, are gonna go into, hey, we don't want to develop, you know, there's an important, you know, problem we have in Hawaii about, you know, affordable housing, having access to, you know, reasonable areas. And it's, it's really, I, I really disagree with, like, I think there's an importance to actually developing our, our unused lands. I hear a lot of complaints about, like, you know, a lot of different types of things. And, you know, I think it can, you know, higher density within Kahala shouldn't be, you know, pushed off as much as it should, it is. And I don't think that is polluting by any means. I think there's a sustainable way to do it, and I, and I think. I think there's a sustainable way to do it. And I, and I think it's crazy to not even try to have that discussion. What I'm afraid of the committee is that this is going to happen, right? Like that, we all of a sudden start talking about things that aren't talking about what you're saying. And, and I think having a, having, you know, us appoint somebody to oversee that and then having, you know, us as the key members of this committee. And, and as you mentioned, like, all these other districts and areas should be within this committee. I think it's, you know, we shouldn't be doing it that way. Um, I, I probably should have said this earlier and I, I went to another meeting this month. I went to the, the Waikiki Improvement Association meeting. Um, they have a really kind of interesting thing going on. I've, you know, mixed, mixed feelings about what they're doing. Um, being the neighbor that I feel like they're pushing a lot of homeless into because they're doing active engagement of pushing people out, um, which has been to us. Um, so, bad, but what they're doing is good, right? They just should be having more awareness of what they're doing around them. I think that's kind of what I would say, suggest we should do into and go into instead of having the, our neighborhood board being the entity of which this is, right? I would, I would, I would hope you have better active community engagement, reaching out to more people, not having it led by our neighborhood board. Um, and then I think that gives access to having the ability to engage more and more diversity of people. Um, again, I think going back to what like my, how I was starting, you know, like my, my subdistrict is the most populous in our, in our district. And it's unfortunate that, that my district is not as heavily engaged as the other districts or other sub-districts. And shame on them. I'm here to try to do my part, try to say my piece about this and say that we are, we are a large voice of Kahala. Please listen to us and don't like have these other subdivided conversations being endorsed by a, you know, a, a community that we, we form that's here, you know, overrepresented by the minority.
Thank you, Colin. A point of clarification, I don't recall saying that the PUC was a polluter. Um, and I can go back and review the recording of this section and, and clarify that and confirm it. But I would not say that the Primary Urban Center Development Plan.
I apologize. We have to pause the conversation for one second. Apparently we just lost internet.
Okay.
Right as things were starting to get good.
Okay, but shall we just keep on going?
Give us one second. Are we good? I apologize, everybody.
Yeah, it's eight thirty.
Oh, you wish. It's almost nine o'clock. I was just gonna say, this is one of the longest meetings I've held.
Yeah, right.
All right, we are back.
The last meeting.
Okay.
Wasn't it like one hour, under one hour?
It was.
I, I did forty-seven minutes, but who's counting?
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and finish with Colin then. So first of all, the committee is a planning committee. It has no authority to do anything. All it's, it's going to, all it's going to be doing is collecting information and input from the community on things that we determine should be included in the plan, in the two plans. The recommendations that come from the committee will then be given to our Wailei Kahala Neighborhood Board, board. And it's up to the board to decide whether or not they would like to move forward with the implementation on one or more of those recommendations to both of those plans. So we have time because both plans are not immediately, are not going to be updated immediately. There is a timeframe for those. But what we're suggesting is that a planning committee gathers that information as soon as we can and put it into some form of report so that when it comes time to engage with the DPP to update the two plans, that we will be better prepared. We won't be behind the eight ball any longer. But that's, that's, so we're not going to be authorizing any kind of implementation, but just collecting recommendations.
Yeah, I understand that. I guess, I just wanted, you know, just back, my, my concern is that, like you said, we're, we are, neighborhood board is establishing a committee that is then govern, that is then advising our own neighborhood board. My, this neighborhood board is, is under, you are, the majority of the, of the neighborhood board is the minority of our population.
I invite you to participate in the planning committee.
I understand that. I'm not, I'm not saying I dismiss that, but.
To carry the voice of all the other people in your.
But it's inappropriate for us to eliminate that, to, to this, 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 this voice. Don't talk, grab the mic from me, Rich. It, it's, we need, I, I think I would implore you to do something more along the lines of a Waikiki Community Improvement Association where it isn't, is a governed by something that's different than what the, you know, than what we are.
If I may interrupt for a second, Mr. Cam has been standing here for a minute and his legs look a little tired. Mr. Cam?
Um, I do hear you out, but I also feel like that can be an opportunity to not only, I guess, bridge the, bridge the different plans between the Primary Urban Core and the East Honolulu Sustainable Plan, but to also hear out underrepresented voices like you because I definitely sympathize with a lot of your concerns. Thank you very much.
I just want it not to be made by our neighborhood board and then, you know, advising our neighborhood board. I think it's just, we're, we're just, you know, it's a, in a circle, we're solely doing ourselves. Like, if you wanna, you need, if you want to do this appropriately, you need to have a larger threshold and have a larger leadership than just what our neighborhood board is.
If you were to provide a list of names and community standouts from your community who you felt represented the totality of the voice of that area and submitted that to.
Well, I'm, I'm very confused because then she's, she started including all the other, these, all these other districts, right? Like, how wide are we spreading? I think that's, these are things that I want you to ask. Even like how that gentleman said, like, how many members are this? Like, we need to understand these kind of quotas and forums to make sure we're addressing the representation appropriately.
So just so I, I'm clear, you're suggesting that we not include collaboration or gaining input from the other neighborhood boards?
I'm saying we shouldn't be forming a committee. I'm saying, as a neighborhood board, we should not be forming a committee inside of our neighborhood board.
Okay, I get it now.
I think the easiest way to solve this is to call for a vote on the committee. Um, can I, first, Colin?
The proposal that Aloha has proposed, you know, be.
Raise the mic up a little bit.
Yeah, so I, I will call for the question and make the motion to approve Aloha's proposal.
I'll second it. All in favor? All opposed? All abstaining? All right, let's, let's do that one more time.
Yep, okay.
Okay, want to call your name? Please say yes, no, or abstain. Okay, Christian? Peter? Oh. Oh, okay. Fujigi?
I, I do not agree that we should be forming a committee for, to govern something larger.
Okay. Uh, Rich Turbin?
I, I'm in favor.
Okay. Uh, Brian Wong?
Abstain as presented.
Okay. Uh, Aloha?
Aye.
Uh, Leon?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, that's four, four yes, one, uh, one no and one abstention. This is now adopted. In its current firm, it does not move forward. Um, let's see, up next. I apologize, Ms. Thomas? Nancy Thomas, are you here with us? Never mind. All right. Um, well, I appreciate the lively discussion and the engagement. It's great that we are all here, involved in our community. Um, up next, let's see, regular meeting, uh, regular meeting will be Thursday, August 14th at the Alawai Golf Course, right back here at our regular day and time. Can I get a vote to, oh, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you so much for engaging with us. Oh.
Are, are, are there community announcements?
Oh, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we discussed the Summer Streets Pilot Program, but is there anybody else who would like to? I apologize on the false start on that one. Is there anybody else who would like to present under presentations or new business?
I have an announcement about a community event that's coming up. Is that okay?
Yes, absolutely. Please go right ahead.
Uh, okay, thank you. My name's Taylor Urban. I'll do this quick. I'm Taylor Urban. I live in Diamond Head, but I help with the marathon readiness series. So on the fifteen, or on the 10th of August, we're going to be doing, it's the Boca 15K or Norman Tamanaha 15K. We're also going to be doing a 5K this year. So this is Sunday, August 10th. The start time for the race will be 6:00 AM. Um, it will start and end at Kapialani Park. Um, but it is the race that goes, it'll start at Kapialani and then go all the way up to Diamond Head, uh, go down Kahala Avenue, go down Kailelau, uh, and then go to the gas station, uh, the Aloha Gas Station by the mall. And then they'll come back up 18th and then head back to the park. So, uh, everything in this area, in the Kahala area, we should totally be out of there by 8:00 AM. So, uh, hopefully it'll be really quick and as non-disruptive as we can. There aren't any road closures in this area. The only closures are going to be around the park. Um, so there shouldn't be too much of a disruption at all. Um, but regardless, we do have a lot of cops and volunteers kind of scattered just to mitigate any issues and, you know, maintain safety and, uh, traffic, any traffic problems or anything. And there should be a lot of preemptive notice via signage and whatnot. Also be going to businesses and whatnot in the area and giving this spiel as like a, a document. And I can also send all of this information with the course map and all the traffic info. I can send that to your email, um, to the chair. And yeah, we've done this, we do this race every year, so it's kind of just the same deal. Uh, we should be out of there pretty quick. Uh, there should be about 500 people or so racing. So, uh, hopefully not too much of a disruption to anybody Sunday morning, but yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Taylor. Is there anything that the board can do to help support?
Uh, I don't think so. If you want to sign up, feel free. Um, I'll send everybody or I'll send a share the link, but we'd love to see you out there. So feel free. Just let me know if you have any questions or anything or something comes up. I'd be happy to connect with anybody.
All right. Well, thank you so much. That was already announced. We, so the proposal to establish was put in the wrong section. I moved that down to the bottom. Uh, the wildfire preparedness workshop occurred last month. That was included in here accidentally. And then I discussed the Summer Streets Pilot Program. And then we moved on to the East Honolulu, uh, conversation, but I, oh, well. Would you like to, uh? Okay, um, so the, uh, the House of Representatives wrote a bill encouraging the community at large, including youth and community participants, to go out, enjoy. They were shutting down certain, uh, certain streets to allow bike riders, community runners, people to go outside, just enjoy the community. Um, the email that I received didn't provide all that much information. So, uh, this is the culmination of the information that I received. So I apologize. I can inquire and follow up with them for that, you, and let's see. And I believe that's it. Does anybody else have any, uh, other topics, announcements, presentations? One wants, going twice? Sold. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you so much for coming this evening.